...in open session at 7:15 is our second. Second made by Vice Chair Borje, Dr. McGee, or call Chairman Seal. Yes, Vice Chair Borje. Yes, Mr. Mina. Yes, Mr. Gonzalez. We are in an open session. This is the regular scheduled meeting inside the school committee. It is Wednesday, September 12th, 7:17. Dr. McGee, or call Chairman Seal. Here, Vice Chair Borje.
Here.
Mr. Mina.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
I will make a motion to seal the closed session. Minutes is our second. Second made by Vice Chair Borje, Dr. McGee, or call Chairman Seal. Yes, Vice Chair Borje. Yes, Mr. Mina.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Everyone could please stand for a moment. Let us recite the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is good welfare. So anyone like to come address the committee? If you would, please go to the microphone, say your name and address for the record. Hearing, no one, I'm going to make a motion to take out of order. Item number two, new business discussion approval on the whack tech mold remediation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Borje, Dr. McGee, or call. Call the favor see if I can see that.
Hi.
Hi, both of you guys have it. So I'll make a motion for discussion approval on the whack tech. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Is the microphone working or gentlemen? More or less? Less apparently. Only we have the facilities guy.
Why not?
Get a technology guy up here, maybe he can.
Move this desk up there. Be closer.
Yeah.
But pushing flush.
We're writing some stuff, alright. Well, the jokes are all good fun, technology and facilities director, thank you.
High entertainment.
Alright. So, Dr. McGee, do you want us to just turn it over to?
Can you hear that?
Who started?
So, we have three gentlemen here this evening who are, I'll meet each of them. Mr. Mike Martel, who's from Martel Construction. Mr. Martin Hamlet, Martel is the subcontractor that we've been working here at the socket to work on a variety of building projects. And there is over the last year, about a year and a half or so. We also have Mr. John Carbone, who's from Vortex, whose company goes out to schools and various other locations to test air quality and to test surfaces or things such as mold. And we have Justin Pomerantz, who is here from Single Source, which is a company that comes into schools and other locations to remediate different types of situations that, you know, some that involve mold and other and other types of just clean in general. So, and Mr. Tariani, of course, is here as our active facilities director. So, these three gentlemen are here to answer any questions you might have. But I would first like to sort of start the conversation to let everybody know through the history of what's, you know, happened over the last few weeks and where we are and why we're here tonight and why we're discussing what we're going to be discussing. So, this summer on August 28th, myself, Mr. Tariani, and Mr. Webb, we're at the Career Center. And we were just going through the building, just checking on, you know, the cleanliness, you know, the work that was done maintenance wise over the summer. And we came upon a classroom where the rug had some spots of mold. And so we spoke to the hostilities and the situation stemmed from the fact that carpeting was cleaned in shampoo and there wasn't that great time for it to dry. So, coupled that with the humidity and the heat that we experienced this summer, we found, discovered that it was old building on the rug. Immediately discovering after discovering that, Mr. Tariani reached out to Mr. Carbone of Vortex to have him, you know, I mean, we cleaned it first and we still didn't, you know, clean it and allow it enough time for it to dry, you know, a number of things and things. But Mr. Carbone was called in and his company, Vortex, came in and they did an air quality test first in the building, in that room, throughout the building. And they also took some swabs within that classroom and other locations of the school basically swatted some same times. So, and I'm not going to get too deep into the report. Mr. Carbone can explain the specifics of that. But the initial report that came back to us said that the air quality was okay, it was fine. There was actually more mold outside of the building than there was inside of the building. The swabs that were done took approximately five to seven days to culture and then, you know, once they got the results from that, they were done by us, at which point they did. So about five to seven days later, Mr. Carbone reached out to Mr. Tariani and myself and explained that in certain tiles, the swabs came back and showed that there was a certain type of mold. And I'm not going to get into the specifics. He's the expert, he can explain that to you. But that there was, on one percent of the tiles in the Career Center. So, later, the following weekend, last weekend, some folks from, I believe it was from, I'm sure it was Mr. Carbone's company or Jason, your group, but came in to basically mark the tiles in the school that need to be cleaned. And that process would include determining which tiles, you know, had this particular type of mold, go in and HEPA vacuum those tiles and then apply mist to those tiles so that that mold wouldn't spread. This type of mold, if it adheres to a surface like that, unless it's interfered with, doesn't spread, it just stays there. And again, the expert will explain that to you shortly. So, we were given this information, that that was the plan at that point in time. It was also determined that when they were going around checking and marking off the tiles that would need to be vacuumed and misted, they also found an area where there was some old piece of furniture. So, at that point in time, Mr. Tariani contacted me this weekend, we spoke. And on Monday, we scheduled a meeting with Mr. Carbone to discuss the situation as it stood in terms of, you know, whether it was discovered and the results that they provided to us from the testing that they did. We've had some meetings, we've had many meetings from that point until now. And you actually have in your packet here, if you want to go to, go down to the Vortex report. So there are three documents that you have here, the Vortex report, which we probably should talk about first before we get to the next two documents because I don't want to get too far ahead of us, especially since I'm sure you have questions, you know, about the process and the testing and what it showed. So, I think for now, I'm not sure if I want to go any farther or if I want to just focus on.
Are we getting to the results?
So, Mr. Carbone, would you mind just sort of describing what the results from the report showed and tell us?
Good evening. Just to give a little background, I've been involved in the last six weeks with two school closures for mold and another partial school closure for mold. Give you a little background on those schools. When you walked into the school buildings, almost every single chair had mold on it, both of those school buildings. The third one, the entire wing had mold on the desks and everything else. When we came into this location school on 28th, one chair had mold on it. That was it. And that was due to the floor underneath. The carpet underneath was wet and with the high moisture level and the high humidity this summer, it just evaporated. Mold is something that's a live organism. It acts like grass seeds. When you add moisture, it grows. When you take it away, it's dormant and it's in the environment everywhere. So at that point, when I came on 28th, I took air samples and I took air samples right under where I collected the samples from the diffusers of the swap and in the back wing at 101, I took a sample of seal tile which had this livestock working like dirt on. And I took samples of both spots, air samples right directly under it. And they happened to be right under the diffuser, the sieve diffuser with the dumper. At that time, the air samples came back the next day, three out of ten on the clock, between 13 and 520 pounds per millimeter, per meter cubed, which is extremely low because the outside was over 10,000. Now that means nothing unless you put it in relative terms. The inside was 10,000, outside 10,000. It's still good because you cannot be any better than what the outside air is because you're bringing in and out, changes of air. But this is extremely low. So the air was fine. So basically, bottom line of that was, it's just not much of the seal tiles near the diffusers and a bunch of air has brought that school. And I did swab testing. They have what's called a direct verification. Direct doesn't give you, gives you a rough estimate. It's a quick response, snapshot timing exactly if you do have mold on that stuff that was in the edge of the dumper, which is said possibly in rain. We had to wait five days for it to culture. And it did come back that it was plasporid, which is a very typical low-impact mold growing on some of the tiles right near the dumper.
So what does low-impact mean?
It's not like stacking rotus. It's not the type that's really harmful to you. It's very common. It grows around plants. It's a very common mold that grows either way it's going to grow. It just matters. And then it, and it doesn't stay in the air long. This is evident. It's not the air. Mold has to attach to something, like a cellulose product, which kind of sticks to it and eats. That's what gives it life and moisture. Take away moisture, it's going to get doggy mold. So basically, because it's on the tile, it's stuck. It's not here. That's why you get both air samples because you breathe the air and the sampling on those two areas that look like mold. And it is confirmed to be mold, but it's very low percentage mold over that gray area. So, and it's mold the exact same type of plasporid. So, the mold on the seal tiles is plasporid. It's the same mold that's on the edge of the diffuser where it pushes the air through the room. So, and my recommendations, there were a couple of recommendations to deal with, but after we met, I think the recommendations have changed because you had planned renovations to renovate the seal tiles. And that was a perfect time to get rid of the seal tiles and at the same time address that little mold on mold that is left in the areas. And it's not an issue until you disturb the seal tiles. That's what you don't want to do. Once you start disturbing the seal tiles, it's going to get in more. That's why everything has to be done in phases and sections. So you don't want to really touch the seal tiles, take them out unless you know exactly what you're going to do. And then obviously, it's a good time to go through with that project. You want to do it iterally. It gets the project done. It also eliminates any potential for, you know, the mold even to grow, which it really has to because I think someone hasn't been there a while. And at the same time, do duct cleaning.
If it's low-impact and it wasn't that bad, then why are we looking to do quite a bit of a project here to clean out the building? Maybe I don't understand the definition.
Here's my, it's my opinion. Sure. So, basically, when we were having the conversations, after we got all the information, we thought about basically two options. One option would be to sort of remediate the building by section. So we start in, let's say, the oil oiled and culinary and, you know, carpentry area, sealing off the other parts of the building and just do everything there, go through the ducts and, you know, clean the ducts properly, remove all the ceiling tile, put this ceiling grid, put a brand new ceiling grid and ceiling tiles and then build on it to a second session. The conversations that we had, we felt as though doing that, even though the air quality is fine based on testing and even though mold, if it's not, you know, moved around, won't grow. Just the fact that we have remediators in the building, remediating while we have staff and students in the building at the same time, I felt and the team feels would be not moving back in. So the other option is to take the students from the Career Center, relocate them to the high school. And we also have child studies program for those students. Because there's a date here that hasn't started yet. It doesn't start until next Wednesday. It's moving them, moving that program to an elementary school so that they can be housed there while all the work is being done, while all of the duct work is, you know, completely thoroughly cleaned and disinfected and throughout the entire building, the ceiling grid and the ceiling tiles are completely clean. So we have a brand new, with brand new roof, you know, but as we know, last year we replaced the roof in its entirety. So the roof's not moving. The plan all along with the projects at the Career Center was, once we got the roof, we'd start moving down the dunks to the ceiling tiles, you know, and then down from there. So, we felt as though, we feel as though, even though the building right now is not a danger to students or to staff, even though it would be, you know, not an easy thing to do because, you know, we'd be disrupting the Career Center, moving those students and those staff, that this would be an opportune time for us to go in and just take care of everything. So that when the students and staff return and we have a time, an estimated timeline that we can talk about, when they move back in, everything is good to go and not waiting for the summer to do the work that we're doing now.
Dr. McGee has something?
Sure.
Um, I think we have to understand that the phasing was in an unoccupied building. I just want to make sure that's clear. I mean, phasing, due to the extent of the project is, you know, to keep the project rolling was an option. Unoccupied is more viable.
So we can slow the process down that much more if it were occupied?
Yes.
Going through sections of the building?
How long is it expected to take if it was an unoccupied building?
I think we're talking, you know, we're shooting six to eight weeks. I think we can potentially speed it up, but we need to kind of get the mold rolling and get in there.
Yeah?
So, the mold was staying on the tile, the same on the chairs?
Please?
The same kind of mold on the chairs also?
Yes.
And is there any concern about the rug, on the main floor? Usually, I know the rug was cleaned, but?
We're going to replace the carpeting for Career Tech Center alone during the process of replacing the ceiling tiles. And among the committee, so choose, we would also have to replace the carpeting as well. Not just in that classroom, there's a couple of muddy areas. So we're going to replace all the carpeting in that area.
Also, in addition, we're going to be cleaning all the air duct systems out just to make sure that nothing airborne is obviously affected and wrong around the school itself. So it's going to be a very detailed cleaning.
So six to eight weeks is a long time. What's the plan for the students who would be at the Career Center at that time?
So, we have that. So we go to subsection B, student relocation plan. Mr. Webb and Mr. Anderson and Mr. Bluey put together a period by period outline of where staff and students from each department at the Career Center would be relocated to the high school.
And this is just during the duration?
Yes.
So I see it in front of me, but I'm going to ask anyways, is this feasible?
Yes.
Before you were shaking your head pretty affirmatively. Okay, alright. Now we just sort of got a, alright, okay, we, a little more confidence there.
Yes.
Alright. Mr. Webb? Okay, you guys are not instilling confidence with your affirmative responses. Yes?
Mr. Webb? I guess my concern is six to eight weeks, you've got courses like automotive, culinary, lab work. So if they're going to be moving to the high school, how is that? I mean, you can go back to theory, you can go to the computer, but what about the hands-on aspect of the Career Center that's so important for the kids?
It is important, but there's also pieces to the curriculum that are just as important, such as trips to colleges, trips to New England Tech, Johnson and Wales, onsite for work-based learning experiences, which is a big push by the governor now. So rather than spreading some of those things out like we would naturally do, we will force them down into the first part of the year and use that for that. Construction is a natural for doing some things outside the school naturally. We also have the Z-Space, which is the 3D augmented virtual reality. So the students, automotive is a perfect example, can still take apart an engine, can still work on an engine. Construction can still be their pre-engineering and their engineering thesis using the Z-Space lab.
So basically, you're moving off things that you'd be doing in the spring?
Correct.
The flood of things in the six to eight weeks?
Correct. So they're going to get what they, we're going to get anyways. We're just going to have to change the timeline on what we do. We have a great staff. The people will adapt and we'll make it happen. We have some extra support this year because we added a career coordinator, which was approved by you. So that career coordinator will be focusing and working with the teachers to get these students out and keep their interest up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gonzalez.
I just need to answer a question. I know the cafeteria ones, the cafeteria is pretty obvious.
So looking at the schedule here, for period, every period, the down library and upper library is going to be occupied. How's that going to affect the other students' use of the library or any of the other space behind them? So this is what happens to the PTEC kids, but what about the kids who are already at the high school? You know, how will they?
So we're looking at the libraries, basically going to be closed down and those labs will be utilized by the PTEC students and the computer science upstairs. Fortunately, we were able to get a lot of phone books and we got them into the departments last year and at the end of the year, and we got them back this year. So now teachers have the opportunity to sign out phone book cards and take them to their room and use the library. So now they'll just be able to take them out and actually utilize the phone book cards in their rooms rather than going to the library this period of time.
Okay, so without laughing, do people still like go to library? Okay, thank you for not laughing. Alright, alright. Alright, so the whole thing is that, hey, we're going to go to the library, like goes over, it's all computers now, right?
I know that it is. There's still students who go and take out books. The English classes will go down and do projects when they go to the library. So they'll probably have to adapt to that, but there'll still be opportunities, I think, to go and grab books and bring them out of the library and bring them to their room as opposed to doing that work in the library.
Okay. How are the students getting to both here?
I can press that.
Okay.
So, we spent a.
And it is auditorium one in the high school?
Yes.
Okay. So they're going to split time between?
Not, not the, you mean the high school students or the?
The high school students are going to split time between both here and the high school?
Even naturally, the way it would work is part of those students would be in dairy and the other part of the students would be actually overseeing the students that are in daycare. So the students that are in dairy would be in the auditorium one.
So then I'm moving back and forth on the same day or anything like that? Okay.
Alright. Mr. Chen?
Yeah?
Gentlemen, is this the only course of action that's actually available to us, like shutting down the school for two months? Or is there some way to get it clean? And then next summer, the construction process, you look to really go through again?
I'm an ex-teacher myself, but I've had my own business for 28 years, last 20 years doing as best as I can mold. In my, in the environmental business, there are two words you have to say. What if, what if the mold does spread? What if this, what if that? It's not at that point.
I understand. I'm not saying do nothing. What I'm asking is, is there another type of cleaning, HEPA, like vacuuming type of stuff instead of ripping out everything, you know, every single ceiling tile in the place? Is there, and you said, I think, in your statement that it's probably been there a while. This isn't something that just happened for a while. This has probably been there for years, right? So my question is, is this something that we need to act upon as if this is a leading crisis or is this something we need to do more as a preventative measure? And then really tackle the big job when it would not impact the students who literally just got to the school? You know what I mean? Because I think, I mean, I'm just looking at it from the student's perspective, this is pretty disruptive. This is ripping you out of what you thought would be your class. You're not going to be doing that anymore. It's all changing. And then if it can be prevented or at least delayed, I think that would be a more truthful action. So I guess I'm asking your professional opinion, is this something, is this the only course of action that's on the daily?
This is definitely going to be the best process, in my opinion. I cannot guarantee familiarity from just a simple HEPA vacuuming process on a core of material when it comes to my career work. In addition, we're seeing it around the diffusers on the air ducts. So in the air ducts cleaning, an extensive air duct cleaning is going to be a pretty elaborate process that's, if you're going to do it, it has to be done 100%. And you do have to disrupt the ceiling tiles to do the air duct cleaning as well. So once you're disrupting those tiles, then you have the potential to go airborne throughout the school. I mean, there is possibilities of setting up containment barriers. It's not going to be an efficient option. It's going to elongate the process and it's going to increase the price, to be totally honest with you.
Gonzalez?
So have we identified, you know, the ceiling tiles are due to the old drainage of the roof? Or do we know where? Because the other thing is, if we replace all those ceiling tiles and we told this book to say that we're not going to have mold in a year or two around the ceiling tiles, does there way of identifying where it came from or how? Or what can we, if the roof got too hot in the summer and it got moist and it got, well, it could get hot next summer, so what are we putting so that it doesn't get moist in the room?
That's the main question, I think. There are two things. We have. There are two things, we have heavily stained ceiling tiles from years and years of the roof leaking, we don't even know what's involved that, for that reason. And there are, again, it's the mold spores attached to ceiling tiles, mostly around the diffusers, which pushes cool air into the building, it attaches to it. It's there, it's not heavily, it's not heavy dose of mold at this time, that's what I'm saying. If you wait, you know who could have? So it is the best option, because you really can't go for that ceiling. It's not fix it, doing work, doing top work without container runners in the whole room, so it's most of them, it's a shame.
I think, thank you for stating that. My question really was, once, let's say we just go with this, we're just gonna do this, replace the students, put all the tiles and change the rugs. What's to say, are there, is it included in the price, something that's a kind of like de-due fire or something? That we're not gonna be back here in a year or two, so that harm, harmless little impact, you know, that you will...
So I think it's important to note that one potential cause for this was, was the leaky roof to be rectified by the solving of the problem across the last school year. I think some of the things that we've been looking at during this project is the full cleaning of the HVAC system. I mean, not only cleaning the janitorial, cleaning it, it's part of all this, we'll be looking at the system. I'm just making sure that it's working properly, if not, we'll make any repairs to make sure that that's working, which should provide some prevention to committed me. We'll also be taking note of that in the summer cleaning, scheduled starts, particularly because we had an issue with that building. So making sure that there's a proper airflow circulation. These are all things that we're gonna bring in between the contractors themselves and house, so that we know if there's a hand issue, we'll go forward.
But there's no guarantee.
Well, the mold is outside, it's the seat mold that's outside, so it gets inside and gets hot.
What is, what is...
Yeah. Yes, gentlemen, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's any way to guarantee any access, to guarantee you're not gonna get mold anywhere, you're gonna get mold in your house. I think what's important to note here though is that we're going to rectify the situation now. We can make sure that we put steps in place to do whatever we can to prevent it from occurring in the future. Again, the biggest thing, I think, is probably the roof, the ventilation system, the building's a moldy building. There are some capital repairs in the building, some communities already decided to look at this building. Prior to this occurring, we had a meeting scheduled to talk about some of the items that we're talking about now, not this particular situation, but of the HVAC system and the ceiling tiles. The intention was that this was gonna be a project that was gonna be placed on the agenda to complete towards the end of the school year, next summer. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances, it's moving the timetable forward to one of those projects, is the ceiling tile replacement. But I would be remiss if I could tell the committee that there is going to be discussion in the near future about the HVAC system in that building, and it's going to be to be replaced most likely. But in the meantime, it is, it is running, we are in a mission to run it optimally, so that we don't have any type of condensation maybe to build up. We are going to the colder ones, so I think propensity for us to have a mold issue in the colder weather and like it's dryer is gonna increase that risk. But we are gonna take some proactive steps in the future.
Anyone else?
Chair.
So just, just to make clear on this, so just, I understand this is an optimal way to do this, not yet, 100% understand it makes life easier for you guys, lowers the cost, but it's seriously impacting students and teachers, how it all operates. So is there another way that could be done, that you feel you can still get the same? Maybe not the exact results, but safe results, right? But this is our concern, is safety. So my concern, my question is, is there another way we can assure safety for everyone involved in the building? And then tackle this, like I said, in that summer, when all things be done?
I think, I think one thing that we all have to understand is safety for the kids, for the teachers, for anyone that's in that building.
Sure.
And I don't know about you, but if, if we cordoned off a section of the building and we would, you know, the, you know, the mold remediation was, was in process and your son was at school or your daughter and you saw someone walking in a white suit, would you get concerns? And I think, and it gets sound great now, that if we could potentially still occupy the building, but I think you're gonna have to kind of intercept a lot of those issues. And I think some students...
So this is, I think we understand that, and I think it's, it's clear that the, the risk that we would be taking, but the question is, is, is there another way? Right, like we understand other ways are more risky, right? And that is something we have to live with and deal with. The question is, is, is there another way? If the answer's no, the answer's no. But we all understand up here that, you know, if we make a poor decision or, you know, another decision and it doesn't turn out well, we're the ones who have to accept that. Like, we, we understand that, the question is, is there another way?
There's another way, we can, we can section off the building, find out where, where all the duct work goes. All the duct work is isolated to certain rooms and make sure those rooms are being completed at the same time. There, there is another way.
Have we determined that there's actually mold in the duct or do we just know it's not, that's right now?
There's, there's definitely mold. There definitely is.
There definitely is, it's been tested or the duct is, is that's your...
Just, the only thing that we really, well, he's, he's tested duct, realized what is visual, if what is visual, we can identify as mold. What's in there, it's so dark, you can't identify unless you really cut open it and do some swaps.
I just, again, if you were talking about some dead black mold, the school may need to be open, right? Let's be honest with you. So this isn't something that we're like, oh my god, this school, broken, we gotta shut it now, let's get out, you know? I get all of that. My concern is, and I understand guys, because listen, I'm in a business where I rewire buildings like casinos. I'd much rather shut a casino down than rewire, but I can't. I gotta go in there and I gotta work in between them and what works for them, and it's how it goes, it's a business. We're in a similar situation. We can do all the things, you know, our folks have engineered to work, but it's not convenient, it's just not. You have transportation, you got moving kids and classroom changes and it's a whole, it's not just, let's just shut it down because it's easy. You know, if this was summertime, we wouldn't even be talking about this, you guys heard what we're doing. You know what I mean? But that's my biggest problem, is that it's a lot of displacement for not a week. If you would have said to us, this'll take 10 days, you probably would all be in a little order of means like, okay, that's not so bad. You just said eight weeks, that's two months, and we all know eight weeks can turn into 10, possibly 12, something God forbid we find is way out of that. And I mean, I, I get it. So this is why I'm just trying to figure out a way where we get early, as best we can for now, keep everything rolling, and then we tackle this thing as a full, clean it up 100%. I get it, you know, I'm with you. And I don't, I know I'd be able to do that without any problem.
Mr. Gonzalez?
So it's six to eight weeks, but does everything get treated at the same time? Or would, would it be like sectioned off where there might be, in a couple of weeks, a section that might be...
I don't know.
It could be the whole time, every season?
The six, the six to eight weeks is the complete job. During the process, we are gonna be sectioning it off into phases, as far as, you know, once I finish phase one of the demolition of the ceiling tiles and grid and the full cleaning, sanitizing, once that's completed, tested, clean, go ahead help from, from Gore-Tex in. I start phase two, Mr. Martone starts putting phase one back together behind me. As I complete phase two, same thing, it gets tested, Mike follows me, fills everything back to normal, and then pretty much we all, you know, wrap up phase three as well. So just keeping things flowing.
But still nobody allowed to go. Like, you're not saying phase one, Mr. Martone builds, it's all set, we move students back in, it's still not, that's not the option.
That's...
And I understand...
I was just clearing.
Right?
You have that option.
Well, we have to go on what you say is actually the, you know what I mean? Your original request was we wanna shut the school down for eight weeks. Do our work, eight weeks later, they'll show back up, we're out there, we're good, right? That was the original request.
We're confident we're gonna be eight weeks.
Okay. If there's a, there's another way, and I might be the only one, but there's another way to tackle this. I'd be able to take it from that.
There is another way, there are other ways.
No, that's not why, obviously, because now it's been exposed. Because now, now you want us to say to people, well, it's mold, it's a way to... Yeah. Well, I mean, you tell, you're the expert, isn't it? Would you, would you be in the school all day long with that and feel comfortable, you're okay, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, it's time.
I can feel it to the mind, it looks a little spread out.
Good job.
My daughter's actually in the culinary program. I hear all, and I'm hearing all these things, I need to see all this, but I, I couldn't, I know now it's already been concerned. So I think right, right now, I know all these things that we're talking about are issued, but as a parent, to be honest, I'd rather deal with displacement than the mold. You know, I, I, you know, I could be displaced for six to eight minutes versus being in an environment that could possibly... I'm concerned about, you know, that rug is not out, what's under there? You know, there's, is the dust system, there's still mold that is untested. And we can stay okay, everything's tested the same time mold, but realistically, does that usually mean that every, all mold is there the same time mold? Or should it be something more?
It is, the surface mold is the same type as one type, let us borrow it. And the gear mold is three or four different kinds. But again, it was cleaner in that building when it tested than outside. So mold mold's a difficult thing, but...
Mr. Shorj?
Two things. If we did not have the ability to move the kids, our students to the high school and to put here and make sure that the schedule is work, then we would have to go with something like Mr. Weaver started about, we have to second it off, finish off one session, bring it in, and then we have our fingers crossed. But I've seen these kinds of cleanups industrially. If you don't do a thorough job when you can, it's like at least six out of 10, what I've seen is they had to be started. Because what they had done at the beginning, and all of a sudden they found more after everything was blessed. So when I look at the ability to move our children and still keep their programs and move things around, that's still a better option for the child and for the parents, frankly, and the teachers who have to be in that building. And everyone else in that building. This is, it sounds to me like it's the, it's the, maybe not the only approach, but it sounds like the right...
Anyone else? I have some continued questions about the both here. How are the students who are going to both here or the days that are going there? When are they arriving? How does that coincide with when the building is open in both here? And how are they getting home?
So we're working on the plan. The plan right now would be that students that could arrive to both here instead of going walkers would go to both here first thing in the morning, both here opens at 8:40 for students, our students would be there at 10:00. So students that arrived by bus to the high school would be shuttled over at 8 o'clock. Then the preschool shows up around quarter to eight. So our students will be there, our teacher will be there. At that point, we shuttle between the schools, because there are blocks, they're not on the regular period. So our students are in those classes for an hour and a half, a pop. So then just the students, not the preschool students, just some of the students, we go back and forth between. It's only a five-minute ride, they would drop off from front and back to the back. There'd be no gap on the other side, our students would be out of there at 2:00, their school shuts down at 2:20 somewhere in there. So we wouldn't disrupt them, because we have personnel that will go over with her into both here. So our, our personnel will be handling that flow coming in and out of the school.
So who's opening the building that are...
So this, the staff, the administrators at both here, citizens would be there, but they would also, you know, students arrive, just like they would arrive now at the Career Center, staff would be there, students arrive.
How many, so students would only have to take one trip a day to the...
Correct. They would, they would be transported to and back.
And how long is that round trip?
It's five minutes. From the, from the front of high school. So one of the options was the students...
So, so if, if, if students, there's only one bus running?
We could run one bus, yes.
Well, so I'm just trying to figure, like, so how much time is between classes now? Two minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, and so if a bus has to pick up at the high school, drop off at both here, and then bring back to the high school, that's, you know, a 10-minute round trip?
Correct, those students would be late to their next class.
So they're missing seven minutes a day?
Their class.
For eight weeks?
It would be, and, and, looking at the logistics, we're not talking the same students all the time. We would have some students, I don't believe we can get 40 students into one classroom all day. So I was talking to Melissa, she, she said there may be a second room, but we still have to work that out. But the piece right now, the table, some of the students over, and the next day it would be different students that go over to do that. So we're not taking the same students over and back, and we're losing, those students are losing a consistent amount of time. So we have 20 students, we could be transporting a third of them for two or three days, and then there would be another third for two to three days, and another third would go... So that way you spread out their, any loss that they would have in their academic classes.
It's still three or four hours of loss and structure time over the eight weeks. Do they all have like a similar class afterwards? I mean, so can they be walking in, you know, to math seven or 10 minutes late? Anyone else have any immediate questions? I'm gonna make a motion for a, a five minute recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, Dr. McGee will call.
Chair of Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Porche?
Yes.
Yes.
This is his office.
Five minutes. I make a motion to re, reconvene and open, well, reconvene and adjourn teams for second.
Second.
Second, Dr. McGee will call.
Chair of Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Porche?
Yes.
Yes.
This is his office.
Is the mold still there, did it go away? The break?
No.
Depends where you look.
That's not a funny answer right now. One of the things, I guess... One of the things, I guess, one of the sticking points I have is the transition of kids from the high school to Pothier and back. When, when does the, the daycare start? Because it's not, it's not happening now, right? Because there's not little kids in there now.
There's nobody in there, but it is just our students in there at this time. So it starts on the 19th, I believe, which is Wednesday?
Yes.
Wednesday night.
And how long is that program run? Does it run the entire school year, or is it?
Till June, yes.
Till June?
First week of June.
So... What happens if we delay opening the daycare?
We would have to, I think the, the parents notifying them as soon as possible would be the thing to do. And then we, we hold off, and when we get back in the building, those that want to come back, we come back. Those that have permanent replacements, you know, places for their child, not sure whether, how many we would lose or how many we wouldn't lose.
How many are in now?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Twenty-three little kids are in?
Little ones, correct.
Right.
So, you know, a prudent course of action would be to postpone for one week, see if we can come up with a different plan, see if we can come up with something that addresses the issue we have. If we can, then we can reopen a week later. If we can't, the parents have already made places for their students, their little ones to go, and they could just per, make it a little more permanent for six weeks or if they want it.
Can we move, can we clean? The furniture from the program and have it moved into the high school? Right, because that's the issue, like, furniture is, like, for people who are two and a half feet tall instead of, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more the, uh, facilities.
Talk about the bathrooms.
Correct, that the students would, I mean...
Yeah.
And, and, um, you know, where we would house that over there? We haven't talked about that. There's, there's really, right now, we're maximizing the space of your, on that schedule where we're putting everybody. So to move them, transporting them through the school somehow, um, you know, Pothier's got a beautiful little building, little ice cream building, but it's, you know, the corridors, everything, we would have staff to be able to make that move, um, if we went there.
Listen, Thomas?
What are the chances of finding, um, this job with some kind of, uh, vacation? In the holidays? Maybe for those who are just, maybe it was a special, maybe it was a very nice, or...
What are the chances of combining this type of work with a holiday break where you might be limiting some time?
Um, that's definitely feasible, but when you get into holiday weeks and it's prevailing wage, the cost is going to be substantial, right?
Can I make a suggestion for the, um, that daycare issue that you guys might have? We do a lot of schoolwork, and, uh, you know, Charo, oh, we do a lot of work with Charo, we do a lot of schoolwork all over the state. And Charo has portable, portable trailers where it potentially might be an option for you to put a portable trailer outside and have your daycare for, you know, for a month.
We have a portable trailer, choose for some house though. You can look into the portable trailer?
Yeah. So if you're housing a high school campus, same thing, you get, they must make one, it's difficult, exactly, but I think, wow. And I only, yeah, still there's some content, you need to locate a preschool.
Excuse me, so the question that have the portable trailers, would you make sure that they have, um, batteries?
Who, that's, that's what I saw, well, that'd be the requirements for the, the, the program, yeah?
They would have batteries for the handicap, right?
Right. Okay. Any additional comment or discussion?
Just one more.
Yeah.
Is there a, we have right now, a little ones come to the Career Center, a little ones come in. So the facility, they, their parents, you have permission for the use of the bathrooms or? What about now that we're going to have the high school kids going to Pothier? Um, is there a requirement by require, or you have to give permission to the parents, knowing that we're going to have high school kids now at a, now entry school? Where the facilities are shared or? That's the question.
I don't kind of think that that would be an issue. It's a, it's a, right now, we have, there's still those high school students, and they actually go into our elementary schools and work with our elementary students across the district.
So, all right, so, um... I'm going to make a motion to... Approve the plan to move the WAC Tech students from the WAC Tech building to the high school. The way... The... Daycare program for one week. Pending the feasibility of a trailer that can be located at the high school. I, I really don't like the kids going back and forth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Any discussion? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lima?
No.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
The motion, um, absent. You better have some happy stuff and recommendations and announcements.
Wow, it's, I talk about that.
Just a second.
Well, I welcome back, everyone. I might just wanted to talk a little bit about the start of the school year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I just wanted to let the committee know in terms of district orientation, Chairman Seal was there, uh, being on the 26th of August, we're welcoming back all of our teachers to the district. Um, the following day, August 27th, we had our district professional development day. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Redda, and I want to thank Doc Stone, who is, um, the director of the Dumb and the Bays Camp, uh, which is a, a group that we have been working with for a couple of years now, uh, with professional development, uh, with respect to our teachers and our administrators. This was the first year we had teachers signing up for professional development opportunities during the course of that day versus just going to their building and, and having professional development, you know, with their, with their, sort of, it'll develop more opportunities for our staff during that day. Um, and I think it was a great success, and, uh, we're looking to do that again next year. The opening across the district, I, I will say, has been very smooth thus far. Um, we, typically each year, we, um, we have some concerns with buses, and buses arriving on time to, uh, to schools. And of course, this year, unfortunately, we opened up with, um, with our staff, our teachers, and our professionals working to rule. So we've put plans together at each of our elementary schools to ensure that students are supervised when they, uh, arrive, and they arrive early before the teaching staff reports to their, uh, to their duty. And any students who remain after school or late, whether it's a parent or family member that's late picking them up, or just buses that are, are late arriving to, uh, to the schools. We have been working, myself and Mr. Matariani have been working very hard with Durham to ensure that our buses are on time after school. Uh, we're continuing to work with them, we have a meeting with them coming up. We're meeting also tomorrow, Thursday, with our daycare providers, Y, um, Kids Club, et cetera, because they're the Boys and Girls Club, rather, uh, because they have plans and buses to pick our students up after school in various elementary schools. We just wanted to make sure that their timing is, um, is good, so that we don't have, you know, students that are waiting, or they are supervised, and we want to make sure that that transition is very smooth, so we're continuing to work with them. Uh, in terms of our facilities, Mr. Matariani, facilities department, they're going hard all summer, making sure there are facilities, any work orders that are, um, that are needing to be completed or completed on time, and, um, they're continuing to work very hard. We feel like we're, we're kind of catching up in terms of those facilities work orders, and, um, our buildings are, are in good condition. So, and with Mr. Matariani, who were this summer, and, you know, getting ready for the start of the school year. Uh, so again, all in all, it's been, I think, a very smooth transition. We had some, some obstacles, of course, you know, that we're, we're working to overcome. And, um, I think that if we continue to work together, and, um, we're going to have a great school year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Would any school committee member wish to comment? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to see them place on file and recommendations and announcements. Second by Vice Chair Borje, I'm okay with seeing progress, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, yes, happy. Uh, on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2018. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Any corrections or deletions? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
And the minutes are approved, on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Would any school committee member, uh, wish to discuss any of the items individually?
Mr. Chairman?
Question, would I?
I want to just speak about the homeschooling requests that we received. I think these are, it's ruthless, what we're getting. We're getting letters with all the names blanked out, so basically what I'm looking at, we're looking at our blank forms, but it's...
Uh, before you continue, is there anything else?
Okay.
All right.
Please. I've said it all, I mean, I don't know why we're even bothering with this, because at least in the past, we, we were sharing new names. I don't care what Ryan is telling us, this is crazy. We're looking at a signed wall that's blacked out, and there's nothing we can do about this. And I'm tired of rubber stamping homeschool requests now with no names. So basically, we'll, Miles will just write a letter, sign it, and just send it to us, give it to us by our own means, because they mean nothing, other than that. That's how I feel about this. This is crazy.
Are you really?
I'm not. I'm not telling you that I, I, I've been at this for three years, and I don't understand this. Um, these letters just don't make sense.
Joe, can I break you down like this? I'm kidding. Get this right.
No, it's a statement, I mean, if we're not going to be, if there's nothing that's made that can be done, I don't understand why they have to come to the school.
There, there, there is a question. The question is, is... Why does the committee? What is the committee's obligation to approve a homeschooling request, given the fact that we are, as a committee, given essentially no information, would wish to make that decision?
I agree with that, that doesn't seem to make sense to me. I wasn't involved in the decision to change the, having a name on there to, or whatever, I don't have any, but, you know, there's that pressure from our homeschooling, or, uh, having, having the same, to, to sort of, getting there, because of the specifics of it is. It's not necessarily based on, um, public education, or the, um, federal public education was live, as far as I know. So we may need some flexibility, or just potentially, or if you're dialing this close, so that you can see more information, that we can do, uh, the specifics of, maybe the family, or the child, and that there's a, there's a compromise with, you know, pushing there, that's why I was doing the presentation, that... But that doesn't necessarily speak to the issue that we have.
But Joe, you have a family name, wants to homeschool their children, they have kids. And they said we can do this because the, we, the law's formed, and the school committee approves, I would, it's not, it's not necessarily, you were approved. It doesn't, it's not to a point now that...
Another way to debate about this is that's what you want to put your, in this, what your task is, is to, like, to, 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 to plan, to, 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 to families, so...
But I don't know what the plan is, I can't even check the curriculum, I don't even know who they are. Right? As a committee, you don't know that.
So there's two issues here. Two issues here, one is identification of the specifics of the family and school certificates, and maybe for more information to, to, to... The second is, of course, of the specific, uh, 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 positions you would object, the plan, you know, things like that. But we're not even doing that as a committee.
Yeah.
Yes.
So normally, the correct one will be approved by me, and if you're more comfortable, I can submit to you, and have you approve it.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
So, actually, my question is going to be, so are we technically approving the recommendation of the assistant superintendent versus the actual homeschooling, this, uh, the actual family and their decisions? So really, are we, the, it's, it's called homeschooling, um, um, recommendation, which is really the recommendation of the assistant superintendent, really voting on, because they're, they're, but she's the level where people go, and they have to submit things to her, so she, by the time that they come to us, we have to understand they've already been approved, or they've handed in all the necessary, um, curriculums and everything we need to do, but it's, you would never, would, you've never sent anybody that has not given in the proper, um, paperwork and curriculums and all that?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't send anything that isn't complete.
Anyone else? I look forward to this conversation again next September.
I do not want to usurp the authority of the assistant superintendent, so one. Second, if I'm going to have to approve something, I don't think you don't have the authority, you know? That's all.
I look forward to this conversation again next September. Okay, all right, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the consent agenda is approved. Uh, I just want to make sure that... Is it Miss Ricky? Is she here? Okay, all right. Uh, there were no communications, no school committee reports, on to conferences. There were no communications, no school committee reports, onto conferences and discussion. This is the third and final of the series of presentations based upon school level. So this is the high school, WAC Tech is the culminating one. P. One is down there?
Yes.
So do I need a microphone? Are all you guys going to be right here? Ready?
No. No, two of us need this.
A gesture, a gesture of thanks to me, be free, be bright, be golden.
What for?
Three beats. Fear through you. I don't think I really need a microphone. You all set? You guys all set?
Yeah.
All right.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. So this is the final series in a three-part series. Save the best for last. So we're just going to take you on a trip of a high school student, and what goes into being at the high school. The days when we walk through the high school are much different than they are now for those students, the expectations, how we go about our day. So, we start on, when students walk in, we introduce them to the five pillars and our school-wide expectations. You see them here. So it's respect, preparation, responsibility, pride, and family. So as you can see, if you just look at those two students to the left, their journey is along that Noven path. Everything in between there are things that they can participate in, with the ultimate goal at the end, which is your tassel to graduation. So when the students first walked in, who took over a few years ago, we made it a point to really have an emphasis on the freshman. When you look at your success rates or your dropout rates, you usually lose students within that first year, that first six weeks to a month, I mean, six weeks to half a year. So we really wanted to focus on our freshmen, so we adopted a curriculum called Success 101. Success 101 is wrapped around a 10-year plan, and the 10-year plan asks the questions, who am I, what do I want, and how do I get there? It's a great way for us to personalize that experience with the students, so we can understand what their goals and aspirations are, but at the same time, to help mold them or to guide them in a certain direction of some things that they're interested in. Now, will that 10-year plan stick? No, but at that age, at 14, you can have an idea of who you want to be or how you want to get there, and it gives us an opportunity to help personalize that education. So when you enter school, there's, you know, we know school to be freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, how do you get there? So, high school graduation is all about 20 credits. You need 20 credits to graduate in a four-year period, we're on a seven-period day, so in a four-year period, you have 28 opportunities in four years. However, RIDE regulations, you only need 20 credits to graduate for the classes 2019 and 2020, for English, for math, three science, three social studies, two PE, four electives, a portfolio. For our seniors in the career center, they do a senior project, and then you also have comprehensive course assessments that you have to have achieved in English, math, science, social studies, and one other at some point in time in those four years. Okay?
So what exactly is the comprehensive course assessment?
So it's a combination of a common task and an end-of-the-year assessment, which is going to happen in one year of a student. So, they take that number, you pass both of those, you get your CCA.
And does it matter what year?
Doesn't matter what year.
Do you take it?
Nope. You're going to have, you're going to have that opportunity every single year. So you're going to have multiple common tasks, you're going to have an end-of-the-year assessment. So if that student reaches that, English, math, science, social studies, as a freshman, that goes into their portfolio, they don't need any more CCAs. Okay? However, if you look at RIDE regulations, for 2021 and 2022, those CCAs don't exist. So for our incoming freshmen and our sophomores, they don't need those same requirements. Also, you'll see what we revisited a year ago, that .5 of health and that .5 of PE, we wanted to make sure that health was mandated in there, and then they have the opportunity for five electives. Still a portfolio and a senior project for the career center students. Go to the next one. So throughout their, their high school career, they have many of opportunities with several different electives. So I'm not going to go through everyone, this is just on our website, but I do want to show you, if you just open up that, yeah. So you'll see that, in order to, you come in as a ninth grader, for me to tell you that you're a sophomore or a true sophomore, you need three credits. One of those classes has to be English, or one of those classes that you passed have had to have been math. Right? One or the other. To be considered a junior, I mean, to be considered a soft, yeah, junior, you need to have seven credits, one English and one math. To be a senior, you will need 12 credits to be considered a senior. Now, why is that? Those numbers just allow us to just, so basically, if you were, you have seven opportunities, let's just say you failed English and math in your freshman year, the next year on paper, you're still considered a freshman because you didn't pass that English and math, and if you don't recoup that credit, you're still going to need that English or math to graduate because you need four. Follow me? So, that's how that, that's how you navigate that. So again, those are just all our elective courses. It's really tough to see on this screen, but they're very comprehensive. Want to go to the next slide, right? So, other opportunities for those students to recoup those English and math credits would be e-learning, which we have now, the virtual high school opportunities, so students who are looking to do more than just what's in their schedule, they take VHS courses, so you might have, so for example, one student right now is studying social media, right? That's a course through VHS. Some of our students do Rosetta Stone, that they can't fit in their daily schedule because it's packed, but they want to challenge themselves more. Some students do Italian through VHS, as far as a language. We have our AP courses, and then the languages I just mentioned. But the flexible credit recovery, if you just go back one more to that one, that's the opportunity for those students to be able to recoup those credits that they might have lost in the years past to get back on track to graduate. They also have opportunities to what we call expanded learning opportunities, or ELO, and those are more hands-on opportunities that look different for every student. So it could be working with the fire department, it could be working with your local police department, it can be working at a local gymnasium to earn your health credit, you're partnering with a member of our school, as far as the member of the faculty, you're partnering with the ELO folks, and you go into a community and you do some type of career exploration of your personal interests. And normally, that's, it's normally held for elective or credit recovery, but it's been more so that it can count as a core credit as well. So built into those students' opportunities again are just our career technical education programs. Just want to show you a quick video of the programs that we offer there.
The program that I'm in is, I started out in sophomore year, it was particularly not my eye when I was touring in freshman year, because I thought that not only could I achieve a lot of portfolio bases, but it was quite challenging to express a lot of artistic ability and ideas that I have.
I was able to watch, I learned a lot of film studies, and what goes into making a film, what goes into making a documentary. I have a teacher that's a PhD, and is a model. We have to care of patients to know how to be professional, I'm going to come to spare during the hospital. I like new results, we're watching it on, I have a teacher that's actually teaching, and showing, and actually working.
This feels good to me, because it allows me to both explore what I want to do, and to invite everybody to do.
I'm trying to put in your 100%, if you're not 100% back, and so that's the way I see how our students here, they might be struggling, but they're pushing really hard, always trying to invest so that we can succeed. And we started from freshman, sophomore year, so I see where I should, where I should go, I was going to be some...
I'm trying to struggle, I will attempt to try to find different parts of school, and it's time to get out of the classroom.
Please go to our first program, that was because it shows us how to become like a teacher assistant, and we're starting by, and so many things, like, you have their state training, and you get your teacher assistant certificate, right, when you make to the program. Well, I'm going to teach you a little bit more, and some of the mentors to help us get out of that, to work with. So in here, I got a lot of opportunities, just some permissions to be seen, great life, and that's what this program is going to be. It's a really good opportunity, it was definitely a lot of opportunity. I know, I saw some of the tourism, and I was like, it's adorable. The worst student actually gets into the toilet really, and has sort of childish confidence that I was running that way for the school, has brought me out of my shell. If you do this, it actually makes you much easier to go to the future, because it's a good world, you can be... It certainly adds to our high school experience, I believe, that being a part of this program, and being a part of this school is not a sort of separate identity, it really adds to the experience, because you get a culture that you wouldn't normally get, and it's an opportunity that I think everyone should take.
So how else can we continue to support our students in just their goals or what their interests are? You know, we have a very comprehensive athletic program, boys and girls volleyball, tennis, basketball, soccer, cross-country, indoor track, outdoor track, field hockey for girls, cheerleading for girls, football, ice hockey, wrestling, girl softball, boys baseball, golf, unified sports, and last year, we also just created an athletic handbook, which is very detailed, to speak to our expectations for student athletes as far as their grades, sportsmanship, and just how we want to see them conduct themselves on and over the playing fields.
Is there a required GPA to participate in sports?
Yes. That GPA, you have to pass 60% of your classes, so by RIDE standard, but by our standard, it's usually, because we have some of those classes on a block, it's usually, it doesn't just add up to that, so it's usually a little bit more. As a matter of fact, when we were fully blocked, you really had to be 75%, because you can't, you either pass four, you pass two, right? But by RIDE standards, it is 60%. Let's kick on that slideshow of the activities.
Is that the same for all, like, other clubs and stuff like that, or is that athletic specific?
Well, it became the same for all once we created that athletic handbook. So initially, it was only for sports, but so now, you know, we make it that, you know, if, now, I can't stop students from participating in theater arts, right, because they're part of that. However, if they're not passing, and they're going to, the theater arts department is going to do a production, but that student isn't passing 60%, they're not going to be a part of that production. So just to highlight some of the, some of the activities that also support our students. So to start the school year this year, just to do something a little different, we actually had a celebration during the first week of school, on Friday, we ran two assemblies, and we showcased all of the activities that the students are part of, and we let them celebrate, and just to try to raise awareness and interest amongst the rest of the student body. I thought it was well-received by the students, because it wasn't necessarily you come into that first week of school, and it's a rules assembly, and this is what we don't want you to do, as opposed to, this is what we want you to do. It started, we started off on a more positive, no, I mean, normally, we come in with just freshmen, and that's kind of the tempo on the first day or the first week, but this kind of embodied the entire student population.
So we had seven periods a day?
Yep. So we're going to go over that.
Okay.
Did we get shut off? Did the tech guy mess me up back there?
It's all about the circle.
So there's just some supports that some different universities or organizations offer. You know, we have a college advisor.
You say eight college advisors? You say eight college advisors?
Yes, in addition to our counselors. But this is, you know, a college advisor, Drew Brown, student assistance counselor, student abuse counselor, Thunder Mrs. Zero Support, CCF, which is in a lot of our communities, Educational Talent Search.
What's that?
ETS. So they're just another organizations. Those college advisors, ETS and College Crusaders, they're pretty much all the same, so they just target, but they just target different students. So students that are, some students haven't been involved in College Crusaders coming up through elementary, middle school. ETS might target those students who have certain gifts and they want to try to branch out and, you know, they'll get connected to those folks. The college advisor kind of helps that process. So ETS isn't someone that just normally has to want to go through college, right, that route. The college advisor normally just caters towards that student. Put that next slide right. So you asked about a typical student day, right? So as you can see, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, we're on a seven period day. Period one, two, three, four, five, six, seven starts the day on a Monday. We rotate that schedule on Tuesday and we start with period four. We go period four, three, two, one, five, six, and seven. So as you'll see, period one and two, three and four are always grouped together. Why are they always grouped together? Because we also have students that attend the Career Center. So those, those periods are always blocked, right? So that one and two, if that were a Career Center student, then they're in their Career Center class and that will never change. So one and two stays the same, four and three stays the same, six and seven stays the same. When we created this schedule a few years ago, the reason for the rotation of the schedule was we were having issues with our students and tardies. So we felt like if we rotated those schedules, then if I'm a student that just wasn't enjoying period one, they're gonna come late to school every day for period one. But if I put the period four class there and they like their period four class, then they won't come late for period four, right? So that's going to hopefully decrease those tardies. However, on Wednesday and Thursday, we have blocks. So you're going to have a ninety-minute block, period two, period four, period five and period six on Wednesday. On Thursday, you're gonna have period one, period three, period five, and period seven. So this student, A, if we just go back to that, that day one, their period one is going to be integrated science. Two, they'll have geometry. Then they'll have their elective, which is law and society. Then they'll have that history class that they need, that they need. Semester one, they'll have that PE or health. Semester two, they're going to have a reading support class. Then they're going to have an English class and another English class. That's a snapshot of a student that might have needed that English to graduate in their senior year. You wanna go to the next one, Brad? Same schedule, different student. They're going to rotate the same. Period one, they have AP Biology. Two, they'll have that general psych. That period three, they can fit that e-learning class that we talked about earlier into their schedule. So if they want to take that Rosetta Stone, it can go there. If they want to take that social media class, it can go there. They can fit Spanish in their schedules. So this is a student that might be taking a little something different. Actually, they are taking that social media class. I know who this student is. They have AP US History, pre-calculus, honors, and AP English.
Is lunch always just during period five?
Lunch is always period five. Lunch, period six and period seven, never rotates.
So when it says like on Wednesday, lunch is, oh, you see the time, you got it, you got it?
Yep. So this is a Career Center student. You see our period one and two, they're going to have health careers. But if you move to their Friday where period two starts the day, their period one and two is still health careers. Right? So if we flipped that any other way, we would break up that chunk of time that they would need. So it was important that those classes had to stay together. But again, they're going to go into their law and society, sociology, English, which is that block, that lunch block, period six and period seven. However, this student has a period eight, right? So in their period eight, what you see at the bottom, they're going after school and they're taking a CTR first aid course for certification. So you could have a student that is interested in that foreign language, it doesn't fit in their schedule, they take a period eight. Or there might be something that I want to challenge myself with, I can take a period eight if it doesn't fit in my schedule.
And they're responsible for translation if they do period eight?
Yes. And everything is, you know, period eight because it is e-learning and virtual, you don't have to do everything in the e-learning classroom. So there's things that you can do at home. However, all of your assessments must be completed in the e-learning room. And so all of this support ultimately just leads to the final slide, which is graduation. Any other questions?
So right now, they, for this year and next year, they have four electives?
You wanna go back to that slide?
Twenty and twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two is five?
Yep.
And?
You can go back to that slide.
I saw that like PE and health were half credits. Can elective, are electives whole credit classes or maybe proportion?
We have some, we have some half-credit classes as well.
Half-credit classes as well. Does a student have to have every period filled or is there like an opportunity for study?
No study.
So you're taking a class?
Yes. Study hall doesn't exist.
Do they have to pay for the e-learning?
If it, if it fits in this, so if it fits in their schedule, we try to put it in their schedule. If it doesn't, then they pay for it.
So if it's a one through seven?
If it's a one through seven, let's just say that student can fit Spanish into their schedule or going to put that e-learning class in their schedule, right? If it doesn't, and they want to take, if they want to take a credit recovery and it doesn't fit in their schedule, then they're gonna have to pay for it. In that period eight.
What foreign languages do we teach? Like not e-learning?
Just French and Spanish.
So French and Spanish should sit in front of a teacher?
Yeah.
Is Latin a thing of the past?
Doesn't exist. Take it through VHS now.
I, I speak it at home. The sciences, do? Is there a requirement for variety in the sciences or can someone just track biology and be done with their sciences? Do they have to like take a biology, take a chemistry, take a physics?
They have to be three lab sciences. So it can be that biology, that integrated science, that chemistry.
Yep.
You don't have to take, or it could be in anatomy, it could be, right? Could be a combination of a few things, but they have to be three lab sciences. You wouldn't take three biologies. So we're not gonna have bio one, two, and three.
Or physics one, two, and three?
Right. It's gonna be different, three different lab sciences. The only, like so even for hit, for social studies, the only thing you're gonna get one and two is world history, one and two, US history. But now your psychology will count as a history credit if you needed it.
So you, you don't have to take history, you can take other social studies?
Those are the three you're going to take in your first three years, but you can take other social studies as well.
So you are gonna take US history, world history, world history, and then you can take additional electives?
Yes.
In the portfolio throughout the entire career?
Yes.
And is that subject-based or is that?
So for your portfolio, just to be specific, so currently you need eighteen pieces of work in your core areas, English, math, social studies, science, and PE. That's going to be five. So you have to be proficient in those five areas. So you know, you're going-
You have to take a PE portfolio?
Say that again?
You have to do a PE portfolio?
A piece of work has to go in. So you, you did a common task in phys ed, you're going to do a common task in PE as well. So you did a common task in PE and it was proficient, that's going to go into your-
So what's a common task then?
A test.
Okay, alright.
Just, you know, that the department made, that everyone's issue. Then we have learning expectations at the high school, which are effective communicator, problem solver, critical thinker, researcher, technology, reflective thinking, researcher, I'm sorry, and fine arts. So those learning expectations, you're going to have to put something in your portfolio around that as well. So something that came from that. So it could be any one of those classes where you were incorporated critical thinking, but there's a rubric attached to all of this as well. So that's how students know what's going to go into their portfolio with the guidance of the teachers that are in those classes as well. So you can get one of those from the learning expectations from any one of those classes. It doesn't just have to be from a specific class.
And there's no requirement for something from the arts like art or music to graduate?
Well, one of those learning expectations is fine arts.
So you have to take one to graduate?
Yes. Well, you have, that has to be a piece that goes into your portfolio.
Okay.
And so there have been some students that haven't had an art throughout the course of their high school career because it's not a graduation requirement. However, they needed a fine arts piece in their portfolio, so they had to do some work with our art teacher at some point in time to get that portfolio piece.
This is great. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to seek a place on while the high school whack that presentation is in a second. Second, made by Mr. Borje, Dr. McGee. There's no unfinished business on item one, new business. I'll make a motion for discussion approval of the appointment of the technology specialist. Second, made by Mr. Borje, Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, I am pleased to recommend Ms. Sarah Ritchie as a technology specialist for the Sock Education Department. Most recently, Ms. Ritchie worked for Ocean State Job Lot Corporate in Norton Kingston, Rhode Island. She was a service desk technician and her duties included, but were not limited to, providing technical assistance and support for incoming queries and issues relating to the computer system, software, and hardware. She's a graduate who arrived in college with completing credits towards a Bachelor of Arts degree in computer science. Based on her past experience, I recommend Ms. Sarah Ritchie as technology specialist for the Sock Education Department. Thank you.
Though, my understanding she's not here for now?
No, she's actually.
Uh, Dr. McGee, you go.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borje?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the appointment is approved. Onto the superintendent's report.
Superintendent? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you have the district over in the moment, you know, the, that, and your computer. So this, this is a snapshot of the twelfth of September. This is not the, obviously, the October first snapshot, which is what, you know, our funding is based on, submitted right. But this is a beginning of the year snapshot of our enrollment. So I'm just gonna point out some areas of interest. First, I'm gonna point out the grand total. If you, if you go to the, that, that very, very top, where it's a tall groups, go all the way over to right, where you have total. So this includes all students who are in our district and also students that we have had district placements. So their total is six thousand one hundred fifteen. That's off from last year, from the previous year. If you go down to enrolled in regular public school, these are the actual students that we have enrolled here. Now, this does not necessarily mean right now that they're all here. Because one of the things that we do in the beginning of the year is we obviously look to see which students are enrolled, which students are actually sitting in seats. Because there's a difference between students who may be enrolled, students who may not be attended. Now, those factors are attendance and, you know, we monitor those students who may be on call and check for those students that are, that have not showed up, basically. But this number of fifty-nine seventy-three is much higher than last year. This time in, higher than two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. But again, we're gonna continue to monitor them and that October first snapshot is the one that really counts. So, you know, historically, you know, our numbers are probably typically different from what we see here again because there are students that are enrolled, which are not here for whatever reasons, they may be attending school in another district or in another state. There's another district in Rhode Island, you would know of that, so it's more than likely that they may be out of state. But, but again, that, that number is specifically higher than it was last year. We didn't hear prior to that. I'm gonna leave the rest to you if you want to just sort of digest this and if you have any questions. I will do my best to answer them.
So after the October first, that's when our enrollment numbers need to shake out? We'll have another snapshot?
Yes, that's the one that's sent to Ryan, that's the next decision. I mean, as you know, you know, if our numbers increase, our, that our A is sort of, it's been as far as based on, you know, based on, so if we have more students than we had last year, then we expect, you know, more, and recently, it's not the number of students we have.
So over half our kids are on trade as much as I would have been saying?
Yes.
And about fourteen hundred sixty kids have waiting fees?
That's correct.
Does anybody have any questions? So I think based upon the conversation we had earlier, we can see, you know, this maybe a couple more times throughout the year, especially as it's tied to the school.
And then certainly, October first snapshot, I'll share.
Yeah, so. Unless anyone has anything, I will make a motion to receive and place on file the open enrollment figures.
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Borje, all favoritists in the commissary.
Aye.
And most of you guys have it. Onto the school committee, uh, good welfare. Um, I'll start. It's, um, I guess glad that we're back in school. I hope that we can resolve the contract issue soon so we can end the, the work pool. I think it's painful for everyone. But I think as long as the, we can prevent the kids from suffering, that we're, you know, moving in the right direction, and I know everybody's trying to do the right thing. Um, I guess I just want this contract to go off soon, so that's all. Do I share with you?
I have one thing. Uh, this week, I had the opportunity to attend the LaSagne Middle School PTO meeting that was held here. Um, I gotta tell you that it is a very well-organized group of parents. They have a lot of activities planned, great brainstorming on fundraising. There's only one issue. They need people to promote, they need parents to get involved, because, uh, certainly the co-chair is forced, he can't, can't do it all, and her, her immediate friend can't do it all, and so I'm, I'm asking parents that have children in middle school to step up and take an active part in the PTO. Um, I gained a lot of information about what's going on in your children's school as well and we've been participating and really helping with their causes and supporting their fundraising. It's all right.
Uh, Mr. Ellis?
I got it.
You should've said, "I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn."
Second motion to adjourn at nine sixteen made by Mr. Lehm, second by Vice Chair Borje.
All favoritists in the commissary. Aye. And most of you guys have it.